Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll call the meeting to order. Any approve the council agenda? Any addenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, just have one minor change and it's under the consent agenda item seven H. It's on your desk. It's just basically an update of the supplier list. There's not really any material changes. There's just a we just had updates, some of the items that we're looking to to sell.
With that change, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Tim to approve agenda with the correction. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Implication Riverside Church. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Reverend Jennifer Drop from Riverside Church and I'm one person that was raised in Hutchinson and I love this community. So it's a real privilege for me tonight to be able to open this meeting with prayer. So let's pray. Father, we thank you for tonight and I thank you for our council members. And I just want to take a moment, Lord, to bless each one of them. Father, I pray for your divine wisdom now as they continue on in this meeting tonight and go through the agenda items that they need to complete. Lord, we just bless everything that you're doing in Hutchinson and the surrounding area. And Father, we just speak your blessing over this meeting tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Next, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All right, we do have a proclamation. Provider Appreciation Day, whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day. And whereas childcare has provided a safe nutrient place for in development of millions of children nationwide and is vital force in our economy. And whereas the pandemic illuminates how indispensable childcare can provide providers are for the well-being and economic security of Hutchinson's young children, families, and community. And whereas childcare programs, which are mostly small businesses run and staffed relentlessly by women, continue to recover from the health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic to meet the needs of more families. And whereas Hutchinson, Minnesota, recognizes that childcare has been and continues to be lifeline for families, communities, and the economy, such as it has provided much-needed support providers to help sustain the vital of childcare by creating the Hutchinson Childcare Coalition. And whereas the future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Support for high-quality childcare representative worthy for the community to our children's future and now there. Now, therefore, I guarantee for seer Mayor of Hutchinson hereby proclaim May tenth, two thousand twenty-four as Provider Appreciation Day in Hutchinson, Minnesota, and I'll urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work and how valuable they are for our communities. All right, and we have a resolution underneath there. Resolution number one, five, seven, one, eight. Resolution accepting fifty-dollar donation from Bruce and Gladys Lickfeld to the Hutchinson Police Department for future equipment purchases.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve that resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Public comment. Citizens addressing the council. Please come forward, state your name and the address for the record. All right, we have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. And B is strategic planning session of March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda. This will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the Hutchinson Center for the Arts on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. B is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Shady Lane Sportsman's Club on June fourteenth and fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four at the McLeod County Fairgrounds. C is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to Riverside Music Festival on July twelfth and thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. D is approval of airport agricultural lease agreement with Skyview Dairy Incorporated. E is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, one, seven. Resolution creating a city engineer position and mending the two thousand twenty-four position classification table. F is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, one, nine. Resolution adopting revised assessment rule. That's SA fifty-one thirty-three relate to one fifteen Oakland Avenue Southeast. J is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, two, zero. Resolution approving plans and specification order advertisement for bids for the water meter replacement project. H is approval of resolution number one, five, seven, two, one. Resolution to sell circlos property. I is reappointment of Diane Womack and Margaret Hoffman to the library board to January of two thousand twenty-seven. J is appointment of Troy Polis to the Hutchinson Utilities Commission to December of two thousand twenty-five. That's filling Bob Windhorst term. K is claims appropriations and contract payments, register A. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. We got consent agenda two, claims appropriation, contract payments, register B. Actually, I have a check on there. I have it. And my son has a check for his business and Chad has a check for his business.
So this is an interesting one. So only a three-nothing vote then from the other ones.
Well, we hope so.
Hope so. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve, register B. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Going down, we got presentation. Compost it right. Mr. Andy.
I'm just doing the introduction.
Is it green?
Now it's on. Good evening, Mayor Council. I want to take a quick minute here to introduce Cassandra Michaels, the city's public outreach and education coordinator. She was hired in August of last year, two thousand twenty-three. And her main responsibilities are exactly that, outreach and education. Regarding our city's curbside organics collection program, you may have seen an influx of social media posts here as of late. Maybe some literature resources laid on your front doorstep or maybe hung on your cart telling how good or bad of a job you've been doing. But a lot of those things are because of Cassandra's efforts. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to her to have her tell you a little bit about herself and get into the presentation.
Thank you, Andy. Yeah, since I am unfamiliar face, I guess I'll tell you a little bit about myself. Prior to coming on in August, I also worked for the city of Eden Prairie and for Carver County. Not in the organics world, but in similar positions where community outreach was at the forefront. For the city of Eden Prairie, it was for energy action plan initiatives. And then Carver County was actually aquatic invasive species and an inspection program. But all of it involved talking to residents, businesses, and stakeholders to educate and let them know the importance and the why behind our programs and you know, why the county or the city is involved in said program, which has been very helpful to my efforts here with Compost it Right. I don't know. I mean, I feel like all of you have heard a bit about the campaign since it's been going on for, you know, several months now. But I'm going to get into a little bit of what has been done since I started and a little bit before to kind of like the planning and design and then what efforts I've kind of put into it so far and then what our next steps are and then a few changes that are coming up. As you guys probably know, you guys are probably familiar with Creecoside and what we do. But since I've started, I have attended quite a few conferences and I'm on committees with other educators and other municipalities and organizations who are in charge of outreach education for their programs. And I have to say, our program is actually very unique. And it's actually ahead of its time. If, you know, if all Hutchinson residents were participating in this program and participating properly, which is obviously what we're trying to work on, we would be taking in a great deal more organic material, which would not only be good for our local landfill, but also for us creating this renewable product and for sales. So as you guys are probably aware, our three challenges, actually in the beginning, I feel like the two challenges were really honed in on, which was that we're receiving a lot of non-compostables in our organic carts. And obviously that's making the material that's processed to with that material, the compost is unsellable. It's too contaminated. And then the other thing is, is just households not participating enough, not using their bins at all. They have one. They keep it in the garage the whole time and just are not participating in the actual program. But another big challenge that I feel like has come alight with all the efforts that we have put in place is just that a lot of people, a lot of households are not collecting food scraps altogether. They're just not using that. And so we're throwing away a lot of valuable material that could be composted. So another part of the educating, obviously, with the contamination is just the people that are not contaminating, they only be using their bins just for yard waste. Simple yard waste, not even thinking about food scraps. So that's a whole nother area where I feel like there can be a really big jump in education of how we could be doing better. This is by no means supposed to be all-encompassing, but just a little bit of an overview of some things that have taken place since, well, I guess it's been about a year now. In April, July, so spring, summer last year, I had not started yet, but things were already starting to roll out. We, there was partner outreach. We have consultants that helped us with this a bit, too. There were surveys done and then partner outreach just to see who would be willing to communicate this message that we're trying to get across, you know, put some effort into this campaign since it is a community campaign. There was also a city pop-up, a city website pop-up that came up that brought you right to the recently redesigned webpage for the city website. And then a Facebook page was launched. Not much was posted on it quite yet until I started, but it was at least launched and there was a few things getting traction, starting to try to get some followers. When I started in August, we got right to making a resident how-to guide. At first, that was supposed to be a new resident guide, you know, meant for people moving into Hutchinson. We have a, we have a citywide organics program. This is how it works. This is what you should put in there. This is what you shouldn't. This is why we do it. And we quickly realized that this information was valuable to everybody, not just new residents. Clearly, we have, you know, quite a few current residents that didn't know the importance of why we're doing it, why we're, how to do it and how to do it properly. So we shifted gears a bit. We made it just all over resident how-to guide. And that was implemented and distributed in many facets and many different events. And I'll go over that a little bit more. And there's also a message sent out in the utility bill that's had a letter actually from Andy, just kind of pleading to people like, hey, we have a problem. This is why it's a problem. This is what you should and should not be doing. And with that came a composting do's and don'ts poster, which was meant to just kind of hang on your fridge and tell you, you know, what's acceptable, what's not. It's a quick reminder. Through June and October, all those months, there was a lot of community outreach and different like in-person events. I went to farmers markets, in-school presentations, where there was activities and getting kids involved. Hopefully they take that information home, tell their parents, tell their neighbors. Also, I had quite a few different kinds of groups, school groups, but leadership groups, a chamber came out again, too. And just did tours of the facility just to show people the actual material and the actual contamination and how it's processed and give people a better visual. October was busy and instead of just social media, which during the June, October time, there's a lot of social media. But in addition to that, we did like community access TV outreach, which is still playing now. And then we got more involved with McLeod, McLeod County and their app. So you know, you can go on their app and you can type in an item and it'll tell you if it's compostable or not or where to put it. And then there's also our messaging that like, hey, we have a new resident guide. We have resources for you. That kind of stuff. And then I quite literally ran alongside a hauler as they picked up carts. And then we tagged them if they were doing it right, doing it wrong, what they could be doing differently, how they could do it better. And I'll go over that a little bit more. But we did that for two days. So we got about two hundred and fifty carts, which is a small amount in the grand scheme of like over four thousand houses participating or at least having a cart. But it gave us a really good idea and we got a lot of information from that. From that, we also changed our three-strikes management. Kind of instead of, you know, sending out a letter with education, oops, you did it again, sending out another letter, more education, we changed it to three to two. So we send out that education, you know, I get notified by the haulers. I send out education. We want people to learn, you know, first and foremost. And then if it happens again, we pull your cart. If people aren't willing to learn, we don't want to keep accepting your material. So kind of updated that at that point. We started doing like giveaways on social media and video explainers, which was literally just me standing in front of the material and showing you, this is what we've collected. This is why this shouldn't be in here. This is where you should put it elsewhere. That had, that had some good traction. And then we actually started doing more education and communication at the bag pickup events, like where they pick up their compostable bags, which we were doing about three times a year. Prior, there wasn't too much education happening at those events, but there were a lot, there's a lot of, you know, users of the compost or the organics carts at those events. So we started educating. We ended on a resident guide to those people. At that time, we also started collecting emails so that I could start sending out a monthly newsletter. And then we've created a lot of marketing, different materials, banners, displays, which I will be using a lot this spring and summer. And yeah, people started, there's gaining a little bit of traction where people are even starting to reach out. The Hutchinson Garden Club meeting has reached, or Hutchinson Garden Club reached out, wanted me to come to a meeting and just, you know, explain things. They heard the buzz. They heard that they're not doing it right. And so that was good. And we have quite a bit more planned for this summer. These are some of the materials that I kind of discussed. First was like creating the logo. And then this is the do's and don'ts poster meant to go like on a fridge. This was the, this is the website. It was revamped, has a lot more information on it than it used to. This is the guide. This is six pages long, so it's detailed enough for you to know all what you need to know, but it's condensed enough that I don't think it loses you. These are the videos we've posted of me with the material. And then these are the the cart tags that we've, we've displayed, which we'll do more of. As you can see on there, we didn't, we don't want to just flat out tell people, well, you're doing it wrong. So you were trying to do it in a way to encourage people. There were some people that's like, you rock. You did great. We didn't find any contaminants. There were some where you can tell they're trying to do it right. They think, you know, all paper is compostable. So they had a bunch of things that really shouldn't be in there, should be in your recycling. But we gave them a little bit of encouragement, like, hey, you just need some work. And then there's some people who just flat out are contaminating because they just are uneducated or aren't willing to learn. So here's some of the, just some pictures of outreach. We have students after a presentation doing an activity. Table at a farmer's market tours. I actually went to the senior center as well, got some input from them. I can't, I don't really reach them on Facebook all that much, so I think I need to reach them more in person. And then through the magnet to just go, they'll be handing out to people a banner, which kind of not only does it obviously talk about the environmental good factors of diverting organic waste, but what really draws people in is investing as well and how they can save money and how the city can save money by doing this. So I'm not going to go through all of these, but we're gaining some traction. Just a few numbers to kind of throw out here. You know, the, I have looked at some of the analytics of the city website. We have significantly grown the traffic going there by our social posts. And that's easy to see. With our cart checks, I just kind of wanted to mention that it's not all bad news, but it's at least one-fourth of them that are contaminating. But the people that was like, you rock. This was all yard waste. I would say we found maybe ten percent. I think that's actually being generous. Were actually that had food scraps, food scraps included. So we really want to work on people diverting those. Of these residents, we have like the you rock people, like I said, they they're doing a good job and they really want to learn how to do it. They take the time to, you know, look at my post, look at things that come in the mail and go to the website. But they do, they still do need reminders. It needs managing. And then this is our biggest population. It's like the middle of the road people. They like that the city does this, but they're really confused about what goes where. And I would say these people are the most confused about what is recyclable and what's compostable. So I think there needs to be quite a bit more collaboration with McLeod County to, to really have people understand the difference. Even with this photo in the corner here with the green bag, this person specifically bought these bags because they were recyclable bags. And they thought that that was what compostable bags are. Not only are those bags not recyclable, they're just made out of recyclable material, but it's whatever's said on the box, you know. So people just need this, this education of what's right, what's, what's wrong. And then you have obviously the people that frequently contaminate. These people, they're, they're far and few between. A lot of them want to do the right thing and want to learn, but you will generally have a few bad apples in a bunch who just don't have any motivation to learn. And those people, we, we should pull their carts. They shouldn't have one then. So what's up next? Actually, this week, got a story time at the library. It's also just meeting people where they're at. I'm going to a worship service. Talk to people at their church, redo more facility tours, get more involved in McLeod County and their events. Planning a Plate to Garden fundraiser, which will actually raise money for the Heart of Minnesota Animal Shelter, but we'll be selling our compost. It'll get a lot of people in front, in front of me just to educate and goes to a good cause. International compost awareness week is coming up. There'll be a lot of giveaways, competition, social engagement. And then we have farmers markets, a demonstration planting that we are going to do at the depot, which will show the benefits of compost. So this will be an actual visual hands-on thing that people can see. Be a part of the JC Water Carnival Community Day, continue in cart tagging. And then obviously more, these events are growing. They're ever-changing and I add to it. But the big thing that I also wanted to bring up to you guys today with this update is we're also going to change the bag size that we provide to people, the compostable bags. With this change comes a significant savings, I guess. So we're also going to provide these countertop bins as well. So these new bags fit this bin perfectly. And the old bags are quite large. And you can put a lot of non-compostables in these. And that's what people are doing. I have cart checked. I have had the haulers look at the garbage as it's being picked up. And they're seeing a lot of these. People are just using them as garbage bags. So they're, they're misusing them in one way or the other. So I really do think that changing the size to something like this that sits on your counter, that is meant for the intended use of these bags, which is collecting food scraps, could cause a decent behavior change. If nothing else, a conversation that needs to happen with people. So, and I do think it'll make it more convenient. I have had people, residents, quite a few ask for this. So I don't think it will be completely negatively viewed. There will be some pushback because people are using them as garbage bags, but that's not what they're for. So that's what that changed. Just in case you guys get any sort of buzz about that or communication, I think you guys should know. And we're rolling that out in May. So at our May pickup event, we'll have smaller bags and bins to offer people.
Can they get those other than at that event?
These bins. So yes, we ordered enough for almost like a third of the people who have organic carts to get one at this first event. If we run out, we will get more.
So that bag can go in the organic cart?
Yes. Yep.
Not the one, the big one?
The big one can too.
The big one can too. So these were our old bags. These are just, the only difference is the size. We're just making it a smaller bag because these are so large, they were just, they just kept being used.
That's something I can see you putting in your house, you know, like.
Yep, and that's what this is.
One of the, one of the things that we, to our, I think with Cassandra's help, our staff, we have some people that come in and ask for garbage, they want to pick up garbage bags.
Yeah.
And we've had to tell them, they're not garbage bags, they're compost bags. And we've had some people go, where do I, what do you mean they're not garbage? So I think one of our problems is that most people think those are just giving out free garbage bags for your home.
I, I would say that's, it's a huge amount of population that actually, that genuinely think that. They don't know that they're doing anything wrong. And I would say it's a lot of the older population as well. They just thought the city was providing them garbage bags for the longest amount of time. And now all of a sudden, you know, you have me going at people. And they're like, what is all this buzz about this? And it's just like, well, this has been happening for a while. It's just, it never was talked about. So so I think this change will, will be a good one.
I like, I, you know, I'm in that group where we throw in small branches and pizza boxes.
Exactly.
I'm sorry. So that would entice us, I know our family, to throw
Exactly. And I think it's
throw your peelings and whatnot.
Exactly. It makes it, it makes it manageable. It makes it somewhat easier to understand. And, and could you get this super easily somewhere like online or easily? Yes. But as providing them will really push people, I think.
Kind of jumpstart.
Yep, I really do. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Cassandra? I would just say she's done a wonderful job of just from the social media aspect and all the other, it's been a great addition to the city. And I'm already, I'm already thinking ideas of somewhere, of other locations throughout the city as time progresses.
All right, let's do it.
Andy, has the contamination gone down since?
It's hard to say. We do physical waste audits where we actually pick through the material. We do those once a year. Actually, the next one will be coming up here in the next couple of weeks. But so we started those in two thousand twenty-two when the campaign really first started. Then in twenty-three, and the results, there was no consistency. So no rhyme or reason. So I'm at this So I, at this point, I would say, I'd like to say yes, but I don't know.
It's, it's also hard because I, I, I look at the material weekly and I, I really feel like it, it. It varies weekly. So sometimes it looks like, okay, we made progress and then you'll find a hood vent in there and you're like, what? So I think it just.
Sometimes the stuff you see on the.
Yeah, I know.
Can you, can you clarify something just so people know? Cause I've been asked this question several times because it's spring and of course. The snow has gone early enough, so we have to get rid of our dog's fecal matter. Uh, where, where would we put that?
The pet waste?
Yes.
In the garbage.
In the regular garbage. Thank you.
Yep.
I just want to clarify that because people have said, no, it's organic. It goes in the organic and it's like, no.
And it's hard because I do think because our, the longevity of this program, it's, you know, it started over twenty years ago, things have changed. But people are hard with change as well. So at one point it wasn't like frowned upon as much, um, but we have found out that it can cause. It poses health risks, risk that people are using that compost for, um, growing vegetation of some sort, you know, maybe one thing if you're just. You know, using the compost to fill in some holes there, but if you're actually like putting it on your garden, um, that can pose health risks. So we just say no, no pet waste.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think you're doing a fantastic job getting out in the public and I think that's. All you have to do is get out there and beat the drum some more to, to get people to understand what goes where.
Yeah.
Cause I, you know, now you're talking about it and it's like, I know my wife is very. Intent on putting the right stuff in the right bin, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah, and it is, it is hard. You have, you have households that have mixed interests in it. So like even I do, I do this, right? And. My husband still doesn't do it right. And I'm like, come on.
You gotta tag them.
I know. So it is hard to get everybody in a household on board, so.
Pat, did you just tell her that whack them?
That's kind of what I heard.
We've been married to all.
Thank you. Lynn, you're up. Look at that. She even puts it up there for you.
That was very nice. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Included in your packet this evening was, um, the comprehensive. Twenty twenty-three Hutchinson Parks, Rock and Community Education Annual Report. Um, Hutchinson Parks, Rock and Community Education provides a comprehensive system of facilities, programs and open spaces. To enhance the quality of life for all people who live, work and play in Hutchinson. We strive to work cooperatively, be highly organized. Practice good stewardship and have a positive attitude in all we do. Each year we, um, issue out three brochures throughout the year. So here are the covers of our three brochures. We do a winter, spring. Summer and a fall, um, just so everyone is aware, we've had a lot of calls. Um, the summer one is coming out, um, it should be delivered to the post office tomorrow and it should hit mailboxes by the end of the week. Um, just as an FYI, because we've had a lot of phone calls, uh, for the summer one and our registration does open April seventeenth. Um, twenty twenty-three brought a lot of staffing changes within our department. Um, we had. Some very long-term employees retire, um, so Marv Hogan was our recreation facilities operations manager. He retired after forty-two years of service to the city, followed by John McGrath, our recreation services coordinator. He also retired in March of twenty twenty-three. Um, and he had served the city for forty-one years. Both positions were reviewed and changes were made that we thought were applicable and were beneficial for our department. Um, and then when those were posted and hired, we had, um, some shifting that happened within our parks department. Randy Carter came over to be our P R C E Facilities Maintenance Manager, which then opened up his position in the parks department. And we created, um, a new position, um, taking Randy's old position and just doing some changes and tweaking to that as well. Chris Hutton transitioned into a lead operator, um, which then we were able to hire Andrew Bentz back, um, as a maintenance operator in September. And then, um, Casey Hager was hired as our recreation manager in April twenty twenty-three. Um, just wanted to thank both, um, Marv and John for their service to the city. They had a long run. Within the P R C E department and their, um, efforts were greatly appreciated by all. Um, one big thing that happened this year in collaboration with the Public Works Department. Um, the City of Hutchinson did apply for our bicycle-friendly community designation. We had, um, currently before that held a bronze certification for two years or two times. Um, and we actually bumped up this year and so we now hold a silver certification and this is, um, will sit with us from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven. Where we will again have to reapply for that designation, uh, but just some statistics up there. Shows that Minnesota is actually number five in bicycle-friendly ranked states. Um, in Minnesota, there's thirty-five bicycle-friendly communities, um, and then there's, you can also do a business and university as well. Um, and then it just shows throughout the whole United States. Um, in spring of twenty twenty-three, there's five hundred and six communities that are, um, recognized for their different certifications. Um, and throughout the United States, there's only a hundred and sixteen silver designations and we are now one of them. So. Um, something to be very proud of for Hutchinson. Minnesota Rec and Park Association did recognize the city, um, Hutchinson Park, Park and Rec and also the fire department for our Fireman's. Park Playground Project, um, so they recognize every year different awards of excellence. And so listed on the screen are the different categories that they recognize, um, for specific, uh, awards and we. Um, were recognized for sponsorship and partnerships for that playground project. Um, Hutchinson Parks, Rock and Community, we, um, just want to thank all of our sponsors and donors throughout the year. We receive a lot of, um, organizational. Help from people, from businesses, organizations and individuals, whether that's monetary or, uh, for, through volunteerism. And we just want to thank everyone for everything they do to be involved with what we do. Um, we bring in around fifty thousand dollars every year just in general fund donations. And then listed, um, were some of the larger projects that we did this year all through sponsors and, um, donations. Um, just some of them are the Shady Ridge Park Improvements. We did some dog park improvements, um, Hutchinson Health sponsors open gym for. Youth that makes it free. Um, the Quanis Club of Hutchinson gave us a fairly large chunk of money to, um. Finish a project at Quanis Park, um, and then just other smaller ones along the way too. But we just want to thank everybody that, um. Helps out our department in a variety of ways. Um, parks and natural resources, I'm not going to read all of this to you, but, um, we did see a, a increase in eleven percent, um, throughout the campground again. With our usage from twenty-two to twenty-three, um, with a hundred and seventy-one days of available camping. Um, and our most popular site was site eighteen and it was reserved for a hundred and sixty-five days. So. We'd like to track our campground usage as we're looking at a potential expansion for years to come and we continue, continue to see an increase in our usage, which is great. Um, vandalism was again, um, remaining pretty steady within our parks. So we did. Have a project where we added some cameras to a variety of locations and then working with Hutchinson PD. Had a movable, um, camera that we moved to different park locations based off of, um, where those incidences were occurring. Um, and that's been a, a really big help for our department. And then, um, just hit a little bit again on some of the volunteer projects that, um, take place. We really appreciate our partnership with the school. We use a lot of, um, student labor, which is, um, great and it's a fun learning experience for them, but. Partnerships with the high school students, um, save more than a thousand hours of labor for us and it's a great learning experience and. And our staff really appreciate those, those times that they get to work with the students. Um, whole list of site improvements and athletic and court maintenance and landscaping, all, um, a bigger list is included in. The annual report, but just wanted to touch on some of the larger projects, um, we got a new west perimeter fence at V M F. Which has been a great upgrade there, new holiday design for our banners, um, and some new holiday garland and wreaths. And then we continue to try and add every year to Library Square to make it more festive. Um, each year we try to renovate one of our fields within our system. This last year was Roberts Park Southwest Field that we approved. And then, um, just continuing to work on our forestry natural resources. We got the grant from the, um. Minnesota D N R for fifty thousand dollars. We've been working through that, um, we worked in twenty twenty-three to figure out kind of our plan. With the prescribed burns, we did some contractual burns and then the goats will be coming this year. Shelters are a very popular thing, um, throughout our system that are reserved. As you can see on the chart up on the screen. The depot is our most popular, um, and frequently rented facility, hundred and sixty-two reservations this past year. Um, and that's a great asset to our system. And then, um, throughout the year from May until, um. The end of our season, we have a variety of other shelters that are available to rent. The depot is the only one that is available all year round. So that's why. It's obviously a lot higher as well too. Birch Arena, we had a big year of construction projects and improvements going on at the arena. Um, we obviously, we rewrapped and re-roofed the east rink and then did a lot of things inside the arena as well. Um, while that was all going on, new lighting, L E D lighting in both rinks, some concession stand upgrades. Um, new gutters and downspout drainage that was completed in tandem with the project. Um, a lot of painting took place and then landscaping around the arena. So it's been a really good project and, um, it, there's. A lot of good improvements and we've had a lot of compliments from the upgrade at Birch Arena. Ice time sold, um, we had two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight hours of ice time sold. So that's between our programs, um. Hutchinson Hockey Association, Hutchinson Figurstein Association and Private Renters. And then we were working really collaboratively with, uh, groups and associations to come up with better rules, regulations and facility guidelines. As we had changes in management over at the arena, um, we just, we really do appreciate those partnerships with them. And then twenty twenty-three, we did spend a lot of time exploring a potential partnership with a junior hockey team. That is no longer interested in coming due to lack of, um, locker room space, but we did spend a lot of time exploring that as well. Um, and then one thing where we saw a huge amount of growth was our, uh, P R C skate school participation. That was, um, a program that we do in-house and we saw a lot of growth there. Um, and then we were able to offer more skating for those littles, um, throughout the year as well too with year-round ice. Um, rec programming, we had, um, with our new rec manager coming in this year, he spent a lot of time kind of reevaluating the programs, looking at, um. What the needs and wants are of the community, um, and so just working with associations to foster what we do through our rec programs. Lot of, um, standard operating procedures and, uh, formal contracts and agreements took place this past year. Revamped our sponsorship program. Again, we talked about, um, our sponsors and donors and we had sixty-six sponsors that supported a hundred and twenty-two youth teams. Um, and I know the kids really love their T-shirts they get that have the. Communities, um, organizations and businesses on them on their first day of the program. So we just really thank those sponsors for that. Um, we did a lot of transitioning from, um, or, uh, to online schedules for both our youth leagues and adult leagues using Team Sideline. And then we continue to see pickleball growing in Hutchinson, um, and we don't have any pickleball numbers to show because. Our system didn't track, um, check-ins for pickleball. So this year, next year, when I come back, I'll be able to track that a little bit better because we. We worked through that, but our system wasn't tracking those every day. And then again, just thanks Hutchinson Health for sponsoring, um, free youth indoor gym and family. Open gym, um, for a second year in a row. And that's been a great, um, asset to our community as well. Youth programs, um, this is a graph that shows the different programs we offer. Our most popular program with two hundred and forty-five participants was. Our indoor soccer program, um, lots which is going on right now, um, for this year as well. Um, but just other things we offer for the youth, basketball, flight football, tackle, travel soccer, soccer, T-ball, tiger ball. Our participation, um, is really steady from year to year. Adult programs, I touched on a little bit about pickleball, but we also offer open soccer and open gym for adults as well with some open basketball time too. Um, and then we do offer leagues as well. So there's slow pitch softball, sand volleyball and indoor volleyball. Um, we have seen a decline in some of the organized adult sports, um, but pickleball has kind of replaced that for our community and across the state. Um, but we usually serve about two hundred and fifty individuals per season because these are, um, the numbers up here show the number of teams, not the number of individuals. The Aquatics Center is always a really big part of our operation. We had a seventy-day season, um, we had to have a little bit of a mechanical issue. Going on in the twenty twenty-three season, um, so we had to close down for a couple of days for those, um, those issues we encountered, but. Total of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixteen check-ins were recorded and that does not include our private rentals that we take in. Uh, we do a lot of those as well too. Larger groups will come for private rentals. Our groups will, um. Will rent the pool solely for themselves. So those aren't included in our total number. But, um, the chart shows how many family passes we sold with the different options going all the way up to a family of eight. Um, that we serve, but that is our most popular piece of the Aquatics Center would be our family passes. And then we did have three or six sponsored, oh, free open swim nights for people. Hutchinson Health sponsored three nights and Common Cup sponsored three nights as well, which is a great avenue for the community if they. Uh, maybe can't afford a swim pass or to attend. So we try to accommodate those as well. And then, um, swim lessons, we served six hundred and forty-nine participants within our swim lessons. Senior Center and Event Center, um, we went to our modified operations in twenty twenty-three for the event center, but we're still able to hold. Um, some events. We had thirty-eight business events and nineteen city events that were held at the event center with our modified hours. But we continue to see an increase in attendance in our senior center, which is great. Um, we record whenever someone comes in for our different programs or activities, or if they just even walk in. Um, and we were up twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-one seniors were through the door compared to ten thousand three hundred and twenty-seven in twenty twenty-two. So. Good increase that we saw, um, a couple of the big things that they do, um, card making club, they recycle old greeting cards and sell them. It's a big fundraiser for them. And then also the book and puzzle sale that they do every year as well too. Um, so they participate in some fundraisers to help support programming at the senior center. And we've been, um, tracking trends and trying to offer some different things for the seniors. But, um, we're really seeing a shift in what our seniors would, would like to do. So we tried to accommodate and do some more active programming. For them, um, but, uh, they still enjoy doing cards and cribbage and bingo and, um, different things like that. So. Up on the screen does show our participation for each activity that we offer, but our sale exercise program with, um. Two thousand three hundred and sixty-one participants is our, one of our biggest programs and they really like that one. Um, along with some other programs that are great, but, um, we have been trying to ask the seniors what they would like and if we can accommodate different programming. And things like that for them, but, um, it's good to see, we continue to see an increase in our senior center usage. Community education also falls within P R C E. They run a little bit different because it's, um, for the school year instead of the. The actual year from January to December, they run July one to June thirtieth. So a little bit different. Um, but in summary, two hundred and eleven activities were offered. Or activities in camps offered with four thousand one hundred and seventy-four participants for the school year. And then it breaks it down for each, um, each brochure that we put out with different activities. But with community education, it's auto, it's auto-school learning for the youth and then adult enrichment. And those things are all things that if someone in our community has a special skill set or. A class they'd like to teach, they reach out to us and we provide that for the community. Or if there's a need that someone, um, brings to our attention, we'll try to find somebody to fit that need. So it really is needs-based for. Community education and the things we offer. Just a chart to show, um, enrollment for each of the categories, summer, fall, winter, spring. Now you can see the pictures, um, there was a hammocking class, bottom pitcher is a theater class and then top one is basketball. And I always like to note that other things that are housed under community education as well, um, with a fiscal agent for middle-level sports. Um, that's facilitated under the activities department at high school, but we help as a fiscal agent for that. Um, and then adult basic education is available as well and that's available at Ridgewater, but is housed through community education. And then early childhood family education that's actually housed at West Elementary, but also through, facilitated through community education. So fitting those needs of our earliest learners and if any of our adults would like to take, um, some enrichment for them as well. Twenty twenty-four projects, um, so there's lots of things happening within our department in twenty twenty-four, but I just pulled out some of the, the larger, um. Projects and probably the ones that are more fun for the public to hear about too. Um, really excited about goats on the goat coming between May and July. And if you live adjacent to the park, you should have received a letter. In which, um, where the goats will be. We'll know what specific dates coming up soon and we'll reach back out. Uh, but we just continue to look at the future of the event center and senior center operations. We have some more improvements going on at Birch Arena. Looking at some better signage and our sound system now that our building looks a little bit different. The acoustics are a little bit different. Um, some bigger park projects, um, V F W has some park improvements coming, Kiwanis Park improvement projects, irrigation going at the school campus, um, and on the fields. We're really looking at the campground and, um, doing an analysis to see what our future expansion could look like. And then, um, Veterans Memorial Field has the grandstand project and lighting improvement project going on this year. So some fun things are happening. Any questions?
I thought that I'd be able to see my sponsor there.
I, I should have, I should have put, um, Mayor Forseer on the forefront. Or Outdoor Motion. That would make it.
You missed the Outdoor Motion team.
Good job.
Uh, I encouraged the rest of the council to sponsor a team. It's pretty cheap, isn't it, Lynn?
Yeah, my daughter was on, um, with your team the one year and she was super excited to be on the mayor's team. She had to tell me that every time she put her shirt on. So yes, it's a very cool thing.
Yeah, you can pick them up at any rock sale. Any other questions for Lynn?
My oldest made the claim last night that, so he's in his last season of rec league sports because he's a third grader. So he has like fourteen Outdoor Motion shirts from this league. But then to back him up, my four-year-old just started this, this, um, spring. Yeah, so I can just keep sponsoring, I guess, for the next seven years, so.
Appreciate it.
Lynn, is there any other projects that you'd like to see brought up? Or like, uh?
I know you talked a little bit about your church.
We have some improvements that we'd like to do to the historic church, um, as we do facilitate rentals there. And there's some, um, concerns just with building code on a few things for the usage of the basement. Nothing for the, the main level of the church, but some things down below to make sure that we're following code so people can use the bathrooms down there. Um, and so we are getting some numbers for what that project would look like. And then we could increase our marketing efforts for that facility at that time. It's just one of those things, our comfortability level of really marketing that facility until it's ready to be utilized to its fullest potential. And then I guess the other thing, oh, well, coming up in the next workshop, we'll be talking a lot about um, parks and recreation projects and future considerations and things like that. But I know there's a big desire from the council for a splash pad. So, um, we do have that plan. It's just unfunded at this time.
You know, Lynn, that, when you mentioned like expansion of and, uh, the expansion of the campgrounds down there. I mean, we go by there pretty frequently. We take the grandkids down in the summer. It seems like that thing's full all the time. I mean, maybe not early in the week, but I mean, when it gets to the weekends, that thing's always full.
Yeah, and we've been tracking usage and there, um, there are a lot of sites that there are very few days that are, it is not rented throughout the whole summer. So I think it was. Yes, yeah, our full hookups continue to be the most popular sites. Um, and then our electric and the tents, but those full hookups, I mean, they are booked. We get a lot of inquiries that they want to stay longer, but they can't because just of what's what's available when they go on our system and register for their time. So yeah, that's, it would be a huge desire for us um, as we explore. And then the other thing we're looking at too, um, throughout our campground analysis would be a campground host. And so we would like to create a position, um, down there and we're working through what that would look like. But it's a very common, um, model in a lot of places. Um, the county does it. Um, they used to have, you know, people live out there, but they're moving to the campground hosts. So that's something we'd like to explore too and what that would look like for us, just to have an extra set of eyes down there, um, all the time to help check in and, um, just be a presence in our campground as it's very popular.
Yeah, I think, Pat, I don't know if the community realizes how how what, how big of an asset that is and how attractive that is and how more and more popular it's becoming.
There's a ton of things for campers to do. I mean, they can just camp with their campfires, which you see a lot at night, but bikes, I mean, there's just a ton.
Our location is, um, really vital to our success at the campground.
You know, when we did our master park plan a couple of years ago, we really identified what that future could look like. And I think you know, obviously that's cost money, but I think, um, somewhere down the road when we eventually get there, that's, you know, that's why we're looking at it. I I really envision that being a, a pretty big, it's, it's not considered a regional campground, but it would probably almost operate like a regional campground with the popularity that it has in the community.
The sanctuary right there and the future splash pad down there somewhere.
And just our trail system and it's close proximity to downtown and just all the things that you can do. Yeah, we've, we get a lot of compliments for our campground, which is a, it's a huge asset to our system.
Lynn, I know you, you, uh, touched a little bit on vandalism, uh, has that been kind of going down chief or I don't know.
It's hit or miss.
Probably goes down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's hard to say because it's going to happen if it's going to happen and it's, we don't know when it's going to happen or where. Um, we'll see a, you know, strand of it for like a couple of weeks and then we won't see it for a while. Again, it's, they're very isolated, um, within our park system and we just try to do our best with, um, mitigating it. And I know our collaboration with the PD is so appreciated by our staff. Um, and those portable cameras have been, um, really helpful, too. As we can move those if we do see a specific spot in which there's a higher, um, amount of vandalism. And then the implementation of the permanent ones have been helpful. The one down at the campground, um, has been really, really helpful in our operations. And then, um, you know, we have it at the rec center, they'll go out the arena. We have it at Elks Park and Rotary Park and they've proven, proven to be very, um, helpful when things do happen.
And then Lynn, maybe touch on a little bit of what we did at the campground last year, late in the year to help with some vandalism mainly in our in our bathroom system up there.
Um, towards the end of our season, we did implement a, um, coded, um, shower facility. So at the campground, we have our shower restroom facility that is really for our patrons that are camping. We were having a lot of vandalism within that, um, within the showers and people sleeping in there overnight or causing a huge mess that we know it wasn't the campers. And for some campers and patrons, that's their only restroom and water source when they stay at our campground. So we did a coded keypad. Um, so the campers, when they rent, they get a code and then they're able to use, um, access into the restroom facility. And that's been helpful, too. We had a lot of positive feedback. We were a little bit worried right away when we first did it, how people would take it. But, um, and our campers and our patrons at the campground were very appreciative of that keypad.
Do we know when the bathrooms will be unlocked for the season?
So May first is typically our target date. Um, we will be turning them on probably a little earlier. We've been waiting, um, for the temperatures in the evenings to not dip down as low as they were. Um, so this next week, it's looking promising. So we're going to start turning them on as we can. Obviously, our first facilities we'll turn on are the ones that, um, serve our spring sports. So V M F Roberts Park. And then we'll start to go through and open up the bathrooms at all of our parks, but May first is always our target date. Um, but you should see that a lot sooner. I don't want to give you a exact date because I don't.
Lynn, I'm going to take out my Council Manhattan, speak to you as a veteran from the community of we really appreciate the, you know, working with the new Gold Star monument that's coming into the Veteran Memorial Park, even though it's a county park, it's still in our community. Uh, helping us with the American Legion Park, uh, the new sign that is expected there. And then with the, uh, Vietnam Memorial that the traveling wall that's coming in. Uh, you guys are kind of all over the place and it's great to see the help and the the vision extended. So thank you from that.
Well, Cloud Vets Park is a city park. It's just, we, we recognize it as a, um, veterans park for everybody. No, it's a great asset to our park system and we appreciate the partnerships with, um, that group as well, too. Because there's always something happening and improvements going on at that park and it just makes it better over year.
Well, and working with veterans is always interesting because every one of us have our own opinion. So being able to work and have you be able to maneuver around the various opinions we have, it always helps to be able to narrow that down. So thank you.
I gotta greet him. I mean, traveled quite, you know, a lot around. I, I think our park system is one of the top-notch ones in the state. You guys keep them up good.
All the comments from veterans who come to this community is, is just we have people who want to move here because of that. We're veterans who want to move here because of that. So that, that makes a huge difference, so.
Yep. And we're grateful for all the partnerships that we get throughout from the community. A lot of generous donations come in to help, help make our parks.
Well, I mean, every park is sponsored by somebody or some group, and I think that shows.
Yes, it really does.
More than appreciative because that's how projects, you know, really do come to fruition and come to life or partnerships like that. Because we know what we want sometimes, but it's really nice to get feedback from groups, individuals, neighbors. So we can really know what the vision is for them, too, because as the user groups, we need to know what they want to, what they want to see within their park as well, too. So we appreciate it.
Well, I think, Matt, you always touch on that. Our, our parky, or our playground equipment is about, what, a million dollars?
Million dollar asset for the.
You know, I mean, people that don't go around all over in the city don't know how many playgrounds we have.
The Elks, they did, that was an all-inclusive park that they put a ton into that, you know, that so that it's for all handicapped or inclusive. So that's been really.
You know, and I get periodically, I'm sure Lynn probably gets it more than I am. I mean, I get phone calls that people have heard of that park system that will call asking where that's at. So they can, you know, bring their child to that, so.
The Elks are exploring, um, adding some new pieces to their park, too. We just got them some numbers to add some musical features onto that playground as well, too. So it's the partnerships that make these playgrounds and parks as great as they are.
Anything else for Lynn? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have unfinished business under new business. Award for Creekside Covered Area Handed Static Pile, the C A S P. Construction and installation project. Mr. Andy.
Good evening once again, Mayor and Council. Yes, uh, as you may have read in the board action form, after nearly five years in the making, uh, we're finally at a point to proceed with hopefully construction and installation of the covered area static pile composting system, otherwise known as CASP. Um, that system, should we move forward, would be replacing the twenty-in vessel system container we have. Um, and these, these composting systems are used to compost the, the food waste and the curbside organic matter that Cassandra spoke to earlier. Um, were required by state to process that a little differently than say our straight yard waste. Um, our yard waste wouldn't, yard waste compost, we can do that out in open window. The food waste side of things, um, has a tendency to generate a little more odor and maybe attract varmints. So we need to obviously, like I said, process that a little differently. So those are more of a controlled environment. Thus the, thus the little, little added expenditure, um, on the system side itself. Uh, staff, uh, publicly solicited bids from contractors, um, unfortunately only received one bid from Voss Construction out of Green Isle. The, the base bid price came in at six hundred and thirteen thousand, ten dollars. Whereas an alternate, and I'll explain the difference between the two, um, came in about seventy-four thousand dollars last night. Didn't have it in front of me here, but I believe it's five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Yeah, I just shy of five hundred and forty. Um, and the difference between the two, the base bid is utilizing poured concrete walls for the bunker walls with frost footings. So they're going to be built to withstand a hurricane or an accidental load or running into it or whatever you may throw at it. Whereas the alternate is set up as T panels or prefabricated concrete walls. Um, there's value in them, obviously in the price tag, just about a seventy-four thousand dollar difference. But we feel that in terms of structural integrity, we're not going to see that out of these panels because these panels will just be set on grade. Yep, they've got a T at the base that'll help, you know, stabilize them from side to side, but they're not going to be as thick as the poured walls would be. And then more than, more importantly, just not have, have the frost footing. So between staff and the engineer, FATH engineering that we partnered with, um, we're recommending moving forward with a base bid at that six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, governance, we have, uh, the Sustainability Advisory Board minutes from November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. The Library Board minutes from February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Hutchinson Utility Commission minutes from February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Parks Recreation Community Education Board minutes from March fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Chief Gibson, you got anything for us tonight? Mike, do you have anything for us? Lynn?
I think I took enough of your time.
Kelly? Andy, you're happy, aren't you?
One, well, one thing to note, uh, Creekside Carnival said we went to switch to our summer hours last week. So we're open Monday through Friday, eight to six and nine to four on Saturdays from now until early November.
Does Andrew?
I'm good.
You're good? You talked enough?
Yeah.
Mark?
Anything else?
Mary? Pat, let's start with you.
Good tonight.
You're good? Chad?
So I missed my park sport meeting because my four-year-old is making his rec league soccer debut. Um, but thankfully Lynn was here to pick up my slack. So you know what the park department is up to, so.
All right. Yeah.
Uh, I haven't had any committee meetings coming up, uh, but the, just I mentioned earlier, the Vietnam traveling wall, that has been firmed. Uh, so that should be coming out into the community information about that should be coming out fairly quick. So thank you.
All right, Dan.
Uh, I have a D C meeting is tomorrow night, so I won't have anything from that until next month.
Okay.
Next week, I mean, uh, next morning meeting, rather.
All right, Pat, now you remembered.
Looking back at our reporter, I can see that, uh, the community is losing their newspaper. That, that saddens me for being a lifelong resident. I know it's a sign of the times, but, uh, it's what we've all looked for, you know, for information if you've been here and that just saddens me, you know, you just, I, I don't think maybe it's an age thing, but, uh, there's just something about holding that physical thing in your hand, you know, and it's just without a doubt a sign of the times, but at any rate.
Well.
It's already here.
Pat, you know, we're, we're all, we, you know, instead of going like this with our phones, we like to go like this with the paper.
Well, and you know, like Matt, you sent out the email. I mean, now all of a sudden we've got to look for a place to post our meetings and our, our legal notices, you know?
I gotta be honest.
Been here my whole life. I didn't know there was a McLeod County Chronicle. I gotta find out what that is. That is good. Where do you get that?
We got a laughter from the back.
Anyway, that's just my two cents. I'm really sad to see that.
Yeah. Man.
So, okay. Um, a couple of things, I'm excited to announce that one of our city holidays, the spring cleanup is, uh, coming up here Saturday, April twentieth. So that's in just a little less than two weeks. So that'll be our, our first of two, um, cleanup opportunities. That's our, our white goods, our large items. You can place two items out at the curb. Um, so yeah, that'll be Saturday, April twentieth. Um, just a reminder that our next strategic planning session will be before our next council meeting. So it's the twenty-third at three forty-five. As Lynn noted, part of that will be on, uh, health and recreation system, but we'll also be talking about, um, the environment as well. Those are two of our core, core values that we'll be touching on. And so I've already sent a little bit of information out, um, but most of our focus will be on the, the recreation side along with the, the health environmental side aspect of it. So that's before our next meeting. Um, it's just over a month away, but filing for the mayor and our two council positions opens May twenty-first. It's a Tuesday and I believe, I know it's Gary and then I think it's Chad and Pat. Um, so those, uh, three positions will be up. And then just as Pat noted, um, obviously with the, the leader closing down, we still have, uh, requirements of where we need to post, um, our, our legal requirements. So when it comes to certain public hearings and there's other aspects at where we need to post. So we will be looking to designate a, a new paper that will likely be at our next council meeting. Well, it will have to be at our next council meeting. We've been in conversations with the McLeod County Chronicle that's out of Glencoe. Um, it's the Glencoe paper, um, about, uh, Obviously, Glencoe paper um about uh doing that for, you know, the interim. I, I can say um I actually had a half hour meeting today and I think some of you others did of uh potential um no newspaper that is looking at coming into, I mean, I think they're exploring their options. They have uh newspapers in various other communities throughout the state and throughout the United States. So um, I think there's some interest in the community um of potentially coming in here and whether or not that leads to anything, I guess we'll find out in the next uh couple of weeks. But um, yeah, there's still we have to meet as a city when it comes to posting, so we'll have some formal action at our next meeting on that.
I had a good conversation with the same person, I believe, and and I, I'm really encouraged, I think, there's some real likes to him being here.
Sure. That's it for me.
Uh, you wanna say who's eligible for the white pickup? There's always some.
Yep, it's, if you receive a utility bill for garbage from the city, you're eligible. So it's mainly single family. I think there's a couple duplexes, twin homes, but businesses are not a part of it, apartments are not a part of it. You actually have to receive a bill from us where you're paying garbage fees. So a lot of times a lot of times, uh, people who probably don't will set things out and they'll say, well, in years past, they got picked up. It might not even been the city who was picking it up. It could have been just random people. So doesn't mean if you won't set it out that somebody might not, might not pick it up, but um for the most part, it's the single family homes who pay a garbage bill to the city of Hutchinson.
I know there's some scrapper saying, oh, around, it's like, well, then you can sell out another.
That peeve of mine is when you see people just put junk out.
You see that quite often.
Really, come on.
I mean, they're, you know, part of the reason we do this, and I, I guess, you know, some people may say, well, why can't I as an apartment owner or a business owner? Well, part of the fees that our residents pay helps to pay for this service. So that's, that's why they're allowed, you know, to partake in it. That's it for me, yep.
All right, thanks, Matt. Um, the only thing I, I'd like to do maybe is look at, uh, I know I was talking with Tim uh about the banner ordinance, I'd like to uh look into that a little bit, see if we can, because I think it's maybe a little outdated, I think, but um, I think we should have uh staff take a look at that.
So Mark, can you maybe touch on the sign ordinance? There's some question about what the city can and can't regulate. Um, I know that's changed quite a bit and I think there's some misperceptions even in the public in what we can and can't do, so.
Yeah.
Sorry to push in the spot, but.
So uh basically the city can't um can only regulate business messages is really what it comes down to. So if a business has an advertisement about their business on their premises that we can regulate. Um, we really can't regulate signs in people's yards um because that has been deemed to be First Amendment free expression. Um, so we're pretty much handcuffed with uh those types of regulations. And I don't know, Mayor, if that's what you were talking about as far as banners or what you.
Yeah, I mean, the signs are, I guess, uh um length that they can be displayed and, and um, you know, that I think that uh if they're professionally done and I don't want stuff that is handwritten and stuff like that, you know, but I mean, this uh, because I know that, I think the ordinance now says that if they can be displayed, you know, there's a permit cost and then it, I think you can display it for fifteen days or something like that.
Perhaps three different times during the year, something like that.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, those are the kind of signs that we can regulate in the business advertising. Um, we also have the ability to regulate off-premise business signs. So for example, um, if someone has a sign up advertising McCormick's Restaurant in their neighborhood, just on their house lot, you know, that wouldn't be allowed on our ordinance, things like that. But yeah, we'd be happy to take a look at the banner stuff and get back to you.
All right, that's about it for me then.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Second by Tim to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.